This building's been there for a long time, I know exactly which one it is. And then their conceptual drawing actually kind of goes in the direction that some of the ideas from the design charrette were highlighting. So at this point, staff's recommendation would be to hire the architectural firm of JMB Architects for not to exceed amount of $10,600 to develop and prepare preliminary design documents and final construction documents for the Front Street Improvement Program.
I'm gonna make that motion, is there a second?
A second then.
Anything on the question, Alderman Roy Wesley?
First of all, how did you come to conclusion of taking Front Street up? Starting there, I know you have to start somewhere, but...
And that's exactly why, a couple of reasons actually. One is we had to start somewhere. The second reason was trying to get our arms around the concept of redeveloping the entire Irving Park corridor, the entire Wooddale Road corridor seemed like a bit much to bite off, so what we thought is let's kind of just do some target areas, let's start working on just small bites at a time. The Front Street area and these buildings are probably the most visible in town to not only residents, but more particularly to people that ride the train and travel Irving Park. So these seem to be the ones to kind of focus on first. In addition to that, in our initial discussions with the two property owners that own the three buildings, by pure coincidence, independently of each other and independently of the city, they were both thinking about doing some facade improvements on their building when we first approached them, so everything seemed to kind of work together.
Follow-up.
Okay, so say we go with this firm. We have no idea how much this is gonna cost, the owners of those buildings, are they financially secure to do something like this or not? I mean, I don't know, I'm not saying that we have the right to go into their finances and see, okay, if we're gonna do this for you because we're giving you an architect plan, what's not saying that, well, okay, thank you for the plans, but I don't have the money to do it.
Sure. The thing is, right now, none of us know how much this program would cost, which is why it seems like the prudent thing to do is we've found an architectural firm that we feel comfortable with, and I think who could come up with a design that would be acceptable to everybody, including the council. And the next step from getting those design drawings, and again, the architects were instructed to give us drawings that would have enough detail where a general contractor could give us an estimate, so we can start narrowing down what it is gonna cost us. Once we get that, you know, we take a timeout, we don't have an architect go forward and finish the construction documents, you know, we send these conceptual drawings to general contractors, get some bids back, at that point, we'll know what kind of dollars we're talking. At that point, we sit down with the property owners and say, this is how much it's gonna cost us, the city is willing to put in this much, you know, you're gonna need to put in this much. Whether they either come out with cash upfront, or whatever type of an agreement they can work out with the city. Again, right now, we don't really know a dollar amount of what it's gonna cost us.
Alderman Coles?
If I remember, John, going back, about a few years ago, we had a survey down on Irving Park, where they went from the one end of the city limits to the other end of the city limits, out of Irving Park, when Betsy Bill was doing it, and so we had it done. That was probably in 2001. Shouldn't we have something around that we can look at that in our files, where we spent X number of dollars? I mean, it was a long time ago, I remember, we had something like that done. And if we do it, and we have it done, we're gonna tear that up for Front Street, we're gonna extend it from Ash Street all the way to Wooddale Road on our project on Irving Park, don't we? So we wanna do, we wanna do the street before we do the rehab on the building. Is that, is that, is that what we're supposed to do?
Now, are you referring to the grade separation study that we did, or, I know Ross just leaned forward and told me that we, there was a study done at the time, but that was based more around improvements, you know, once we got the train station going. I mean, there have been so many studies on Irving Park and what we're gonna do and...
That's why, that's why we do all these studies, and nothing gets done.
Correct.
We spend X number of dollars for each study, but this was a study of Irving Park, just Irving Park itself, with no, nothing to do about the overpass or underpass or any of that. She did a complete study from one end of the town, from eighty-three all the way to Prospect. She did a study of it.
Is that Beth Hibner?
I think it would be Beth Hibner, with HBE or something, yeah.
It should be, it should be someplace in a, in a, set in a file someplace.
I have it.
Somewhere where an engineer would get it.
I have it.
Okay, so Alderman, Eugene Wesley?
I do have it.
Okay.
I could save all the studies. Couple of questions. How many businesses, how many people actually own businesses, I mean, how many, is there only two business owners because they have two separate buildings, or does one business owner own them all, is...
There are two owners that own the three subject buildings. I know Hernan Rivera owns the two-story building with the apartments upstairs. Idris, I don't believe was gonna be able to make it this evening, but, and then there's another owner that owns the liquor store, and then he owns the building where the barber shop and the State Farm offices. So we have two owners, three buildings.
Okay, let me answer this question. Also, I believe around that building, there's a strip mall.
Correct.
There's a dog grooming place, there's a, what...
Yeah, it's where the cafe is.
Right. Why would we not count this into this whole thing?
Small bites, Alderman.
But again, you're going to do the front, and those buildings are basically right next to each other, so why would you not, you're only taking two buildings, but those buildings are almost, if I am mistaken, they may be attached.
No, no, it's, it's three buildings right now. Three separate buildings, and then the L-shaped shopping center is a fourth building. I mean, you've got the parking lots, and then that building is down as far as elevation-wise and...
But you still see that coming out Irving regardless. You do, you see that coffee shop.
Mm-hmm.
So my question is, if you're only going to do those, why don't count that other building in there, then you do that whole entire section. I mean, you still see that other building, and I'll tell you, whatever way you come down, you're going to see the dog grooming coming the other way in that strip mall. I just don't understand, I understand your bit a little bit at a time. It's right next to each other, it's one firearm concern, one building cluster, do them all.
Okay.
Alderman Police?
Well, I think...
I'm sorry, Mayor Police.
Sorry. I think we had, I asked John that, or, no, Ross, I talked to Ross about that, but that building's only about fifteen years old, maybe eighteen at the most, and it was fairly good shape, and that's kind of why, I understand what you're saying, and you know what, they'll be asked to be involved if they want to be. Let's face it, part of this comes from, Addison's been doing this for a few years. Now, anybody who's familiar with Lake Street in Addison, where they have the Lenzase and Magdalena Restaurant over there, I mean, those buildings were pretty rough-looking, and now gives it a whole new look over there. And basically, I think this is what we're trying to achieve here.
Correct.
What?
I want to hear from some other people.
Okay.
Alderman Woods?
Thank you. Just to clarify, I think, as John said, we want it to take smaller chunks, smaller bites, it's hard enough to get this project and this concept through. This will be the model for what we're gonna do for the rest of the businesses. And the other plus side is, as we get one done, it creates that interest, and maybe we can retract from what we put in versus what the other building owners put in, and the more those buildings start to improve, the less we're gonna have to be involved, and the more it'll take off by itself. So, one, as the mayor was saying, also the age of the building, so it would be harder to get those people involved, whereas these building owners were already gonna do something. It was right across from the train station, it has the most presence on the street, although I would agree, I would like to do the whole building, I'd like to go right down Irving if I could, you know, if you guys just opened up the checkbook. But that was the reason for doing it that way. Thank you.
And then Alderman Coles, will it be satisfactory if Mr. Forrest contacts you within the next week and talks about the reviews that study with you to see if there's anything salvageable in there? Would you be able to circle back with Alderman Coles before this went to City Council to resolve whether or not there's something tangible in there?
Certainly. Yes.
There was a survey, a female, she, there was a woman that did it.
Yeah, it was Beth Hibner from HNTB, and that was kind of when we were still talking about the entire rerouting of Irving Park and doing the whole area. Just quickly to address Alderman E. Wesley's comment, our thoughts with that L-shaped Plaza, at this point, as the mayor said, the building isn't that old, it doesn't seem to be in that poor condition, just kind of a plain vanilla stucco building, but what, you know, what we did think about is, once we were able to come up with a full design concept for this, and signage, consistent signage on these buildings is gonna be part of this design, our thought would be to maybe, at that point, as Alderman Woods says, once construction starts going, we could approach the owner of that L-shaped building, and at minimum have him participate in having his signage coordinate with what we're doing on the new buildings, carry that over into his building as well.
Alderman Eugene Wesley?
The only drawback I have on that is you're gonna come up with design on those other two buildings now, okay? So we're gonna have a design for that building, and if the whole, say we take part in this. Now we're gonna have, now you're gonna come back to us and say, we gotta, we wanna do a different design on this building. Why would you not keep the design, the same uniform in a whole area like that, knowing that you got buildings that close to each other? Let's face it, this guy might not like this design, you know, we take part in this, are you going to force this strip mall then go to this design automatically? The problem is, I'm gonna look at two separate designing them, and that's what I'm trying not leaning to, is you have one cluster of one design out there that's gonna commit to this program, and if we take part in this program, you got a whole cluster of buildings right there in one design. I understand his point, the building is a lot newer, I understand that, but I just don't want a development come in here, and whatever we decide, or the buildings that are taking part in this picks this design, and all of a sudden now, I got a different design that don't uniform in this, in that area. I mean, you go down, if you really go downtown Elmhurst, okay, you're looking from downtown, all those buildings are almost identical, pretty close to being the same design, okay? I'm just saying, you got a big cluster there, right there, I don't care if they're newer buildings or not, let's bring it all in to the same design, because then you go with two separate designs. I just can't see that separate design here, and you got two buildings that's sticking out with different design. I just think, you got them all together, it would be different if it was on the other side, but you got them right next to each other.
And we have two landowners that are willing and wanting to do the construction, so that in itself is important for the project to take off and to really accomplish something, get something done, as well as if there's two buildings next to each other, it's okay if they have a little different design, or a different designer architect, I don't see that as a bad thing, and that architect could model it after the adjacent building. Mr. Forrest?
If you as a council vote to expand this initial phase, staff would have no problem with that. We've been waiting twenty years for a council to pull the trigger on something like this, so you guys make the call.
Alderman Eugene Wesley?
My question, did you even approach the other businesses, like that coffee shop or anything, did we even ask, saying that we are making this program maybe available? Did we approach them?
No.
So we didn't answer my question, we didn't approach everyone in that area. So that guy might want to be on board with it, so why don't we at least open the door and talk to those people?
I still don't see it as a bad thing to take one building at a time. Alderman Eugene Wesley?
I'm Roy.
I'm sorry, Roy Wesley. I got my Wesleys mixed up.
First, where does this come out of, this $10,000 if we decide to go along with it?
It's my understanding, streetscape, correct?
Well, streetscape, or it has been included in the CIP as well.
Okay.
Okay, one more question here is, we do this one now, and it goes well, how do you determine who gets next? And, you know, you might, with these low-interest loans, lower interest loans out there now, you might get into it where a business might say, okay, I want mine, I want mine, I want mine, and the interest rates are staying low, and then we say, well, we can't do it because we have no more money, but then, when time comes, our interest rates are going up here, and the businesses can't afford anymore.
Yeah, I am curious, and that as well, where do you draw the line?
How do you, I understand where you have to start with someone, and I agree that you have to start with a small piece, because the next business owner next to where the dog place is might not be able to afford again. So some will be able to afford it, some not, but in return, with the interest rates where they are, businesses are gonna go and get loans if they could redo their building, so I want to know how that comes to play.
Mr. Forrest, and then I'll call on Alderman Woods.
I would think what we have to do is make a determination on what buildings are probably in the most need, what buildings are the most visible, what buildings are pretty much centered around, for lack of a better term, are gonna be our town center district, and again, the cooperation of the owners of the building, if they want to be involved in the program or not.
One follow-up, and then I'm going to Alderman Woods.
So, in return, if I have a business in town, and I pay business license and business taxes and stuff like that, and I might be two buildings out of the downtown, and you're using tax dollars to upgrade their building, but now I can't get into that because I might be two buildings out, but I'm paying the same amount of taxes and everything else to the city. Would that be fair to myself as being a business owner, or, I'm just using...
Right.
I mean, is that fair?
Well, I don't know if it's fair or not, but at some point in time, we have to decide what is gonna be the target area that we're going to, is gonna be the best use of our funds. I mean, initially, it seems like the area zoned, the TCB zoning district, which is basically from Salt Creek to roughly Maple, and, you know, Division north to Center Street here, that would be the first area we would concentrate in.
Alderman Woods?
Yeah, thank you. All those questions are actually excellent questions, that's why we're doing the preliminary plans, to get some pricing, and that's why we made the offering small and didn't do the other buildings, is this will be the model to answer all those questions. How much is the city gonna put in, how much do the owners put in, is there payback, is there not? You know, what the percentages are, how long we're gonna run the program, to what extent, what geographic area are we gonna do it, what's gonna be the criteria to do it, all those questions need to be answered, but we can't answer them until we at least get this first design done, and get some hard costs on what it's gonna cost us, sit down with the other property owners that are interested, and kind of hash out what the program's gonna look like, and then how that's gonna affect everybody else to answer all those questions that everybody's asking, because we don't know the answer yet. Thank you.
I'm gonna call on Mayor Police, then I'm gonna call the question. Mayor Police?
Just, just a little example, as for what Addison spent, they spent about $375,000 of their money that they allocated, and in return, combined with the businesses, the businesses spent over about $2 million. Actually, I saw Mr. Burley yesterday on the street, and I asked him, and he sent me an email this morning, just to find out how their program works. They've had it for a few years, if we approve this, then we have to decide as a council how much money you would like to allocate to this. Let's say you only want to allocate, you know, $50,000 for one year, and that's what you allocate, that's what you have to work, unless you want to do, like, they spent $375, but this was over a bunch, many years. If you want to do $400,000 all in one shot, then that is your choice, but that's gonna be your next question, once the plans are done.
There's a motion, a second, all in favor?
What's the motion?
Well, I mean...
Make a motion.
Yeah. Correct, to, to offer the award to JMB Architects LTD Design Work Preparation of Design Development Drawing for Contractor Pricing and Preparation of Final Construction Documents, not to exceed $10,600. So, there was a motion, a second, I'll entertain a question before we...
The only thing I would like to be put in that motion is where this money's coming from, and I would suggest that put in the motion that comes out of Streetscape Committee and not out of CIP Projects.
Is there enough money in the Streetscape, and it's...
Yes.
Okay, so then, I'm willing to put that in my motion as a second, or?
Sure.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? What, one abstention, any opposed? Yes, yeah, Alderman Woods, okay, motion passes. Next item is report and recommendation for adoption of the 2012 International Code Council Building Code. Mr. Forrest?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. City of Wooddale periodically adopts newer building codes as they become available in order to keep on the forefront of new developments in life safety, construction technology, and to maintain a favorable ISO rating. Wooddale has a reputation throughout the construction community as one of the more proactive communities in code enforcement, we would like that reputation to continue. Last year, it was recommended by Community Development Department to adopt specific components of the 2009 ICC Building Code Group as a City of Wooddale Building Code. As the 2012 Code Group is now available for adoption, it is our opinion that certain improvements in this version of the code make it a superior addition for adoption. During final preparation of the ordinance to complete the process of final adoption of the 2009 code, we continued working on revising the local City of Wooddale Code Amendments in order to coordinate adoption of the two codes. The Local Revisions, which is the book that a lot of you are probably familiar with, it's a smaller book that's contained in the municipal code, it's not the giant stack of code books that you've all seen here before, but that allows us to tailor the code with requirements that are sometimes more and sometimes less restrictive than the code books prepared by the International Code Council, which are meant to be enforced internationally, really. There are companies in Arabia who have actually adopted these codes, so. During this process, the buzz among the building officials was that after being in use for a while, the 2009 code was turning out not to be an improvement over previous issues, and that the 2012 code included several sections that were being changed back to what was existing in earlier versions of the code. Though usually well-intentioned, not all code changes are necessarily good, but until the code is in effect for a while, it's difficult to predict these things. It became apparent, while surveying and discussing the code with different building officials and municipalities, several municipalities were skipping the 2000 edition of the code altogether, and were waiting to go directly to the 2012. In reviewing major changes between the 2009 and the 2012 versions of the code, it's staff's opinion that the 2012 is a new and improved addition, the individual code modules have been reorganized, resulting in an improved and easier-to-use format. The 2012 code contains new requirements that address life safety items, such as the installation of emergency exit signs at floor level, as opposed to being seven feet above the floor. And this is something that fire departments have been trying to get put into the code for years. If a building's on fire, the hallway fills up with smoke, if you've got an exit sign seven feet above the floor, you can't see it. Alderman E. Wesley may have experienced that in his past as a firefighter. So finally, the 2012 code is the first edition that requires the emergency exit signs not only to be located above doors, but also at floor level, for people to make their escape. Another big change in the code is that they've put new sections in their governing liquid petroleum storage, the LP tanks, and prohibitions on the number of tanks that can be purchased at one time at the self-service kiosks. This is an inclusion that's consistent with Homeland Security recommendations. They don't want people to go to these self-serve propane tank farms and buy 20 tanks of propane. There are new requirements for the installation of carbon monoxide detectors in existing residential occupancies, not just as in, not just in new construction as in the current code. Climate change and global events have caused revisions to the wind loading and the seismic minimum standards in construction of buildings. New technologies such as solar panel installations, proper methods of recycling cooking oil, involving the storage and the transfer of the product, as used cooking oil is actually classified as a combustible, green roofs that include vegetation, and one that I thought was kind of interesting, they involve the fire department now in approval of speed bump installations. What they found, that speed bumps can delay response time to a fire truck anywhere from two to seven seconds per bump. So if you have a series four, six, eight speed bumps that a fire truck has to go over, you could be looking at 30 seconds to a minute of lost time. So these are just a few of the new requirements included in the 2012 code. Also, the property maintenance code has established new minimum room sizes that are a little bit larger, in attempt to adequately address overcrowding enforcement. Recently, I contacted Mr. Kelly Reynolds and Mr. Rich Piccolo, both are internationally known and highly respected private code consultants, regarding their opinions of the 2012 code compared to the 2009 code. Both strongly recommended we go with the 2012. Adoption of the 2012 ICC Code Group will allow Wooddale a minimum of six years before we need to consider adopting a newer code in order to maintain a high ISO rating. And in addition, and very important, is that these codes will be relevant for use during the first stages of our anticipated corporate Main Street development. Several scenarios included in the corporate Main Street, the concept of constructing large public multi-use buildings, key to this development, are addressed in the 2012 version of the code. So upon approval, or upon your recommendation to go forward with the adoption of the 2012 code, staff will be presenting a revised version of the City of Wooddale Local Building Code Amendments for your approval, as we need to adopt these codes simultaneously.
Okay, so I'm gonna make a motion, look for a second, and then I'll call questions. So I'm gonna make a motion to recommend adoption of specific components of the 2012 ICC Code Group. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second, second from Alderman Lazera, and other question, Alderman, Eugene Wesley?
I have a question. You try and tell me if I, if this council decides to put in temporary speed bumps with this new code, am I going through the fire prevention, or am I going through their fire board in this code? To authorize speed bumps to be installed? Because according to this, you're saying the fire department has the right, speed bump installation?
I don't think the fire department can prohibit us from installing speed bumps, but I think they would like to be able to put, have some input, you know what, make the speed bump four inches or six inches high, don't make it eight inches high.
But again...
It has to do with the speed that a fire truck can do the speed bump.
And I totally agree with that, okay? Speed bumps, because you know, I was there before, but if I have to go in front of their fire board to get any approval or their fire prevention for speed bumps in the safety of our committee, and they tell me how I have to install them, that don't jive. Is there a way we could take that out of 2012 code? Because I'll tell you one thing, I don't think that changes the response time, I'll tell you that right now. Unless someone could guarantee me that that changed response time, that they had documents saying that that changed response time, I don't buy that. I really don't.
Alderman Eugene, Alderman Roy Wesley?
Alderman Wesley, if you remember, probably about eight years ago, nine years ago, City Council, the city has the final say, and basically what the fire department does, because the city has the final say. And I've gone through that when I was with the fire department, I learned the hard way. So, that doesn't... So, that doesn't matter, what is in here, we would have the final say, no matter what the bureau says.
And along those lines, isn't it where, when we do a subdivision or such, that the fire department has input on how the streets should be shaped, but they don't necessarily stop the subdivision from happening, correct?
That's correct. The building department works with the Fire Prevention Bureau, and our local building code does dictate that the Fire Prevention Bureau works underneath our authority, as a consultant, so to speak. But again, the code does say we get in, you know, we can get input from them about that. But they cannot dictate where and how many would go in.
Do you just want me to dictate how high they should go?
Alderman Woods?
Yeah, John, while we're doing this and you're going, reviewing the, the city's amendments to the code, can we maybe break out a few and, and look at some of the codes that we've been questioning for a little while, given some new information about them, i.e. sprinkler systems and new drywall requirements and stuff? Just so when we get this passed, that we can kind of get it the way we want it, with all the little tweaks that we need for it, and then live with this code for the next four years.
Absolutely, yes. There is, uh, we've finally completed a draft version of a total rewrite of our local code. We've probably deleted about thirty to thirty-five percent of what was in that code as being obsolete or just redundant, and, you know, we've kind of streamlined it. And you're correct, we will address the residential sprinkler issue, which is a whole nother project in itself.
Okay, then, there's a motion, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item is items to be considered at future meetings. A, downtown development initiatives in March, and item B, approval of Wooddale Station in March. Item C, approval of local building code amendments in March as well. Any other items for, for future? And then, Mr. Forrest, or Mr. Murmice, is item A, is that giving the direction of what we want downtown to, like, the redevelopment direction, the thing that Mr. Clicker really wanted us to discuss, Mr. Murmice?
Yeah, I think what the, the downtown development initiatives are actually, is what you talked about tonight is one downtown development initiative. Another downtown development initiative will be our park area, where we hold Prairie Fest and designs for that. There's a couple other downtown initiatives that we've talked about in our strategic planning process and at other past committee meetings. So when it says downtown development initiatives, it's actually a specific item will be discussed under downtown development initiatives. So it's, that's not really the item, that's just a placeholder for a specific item.
Well, we had our strategic planning session a few months back. Mr. Clicker hit, was expressing that he wanted more council direction on what development would be in downtown and that sort of thing. Does he have that now? I mean, do we need to have that discussion, or no?
Well, I suppose we can have that at a committee level. I mean, maybe that's best for a workshop level, or maybe it gets covered in these individual discussions. It kind of works itself out, most likely. So, I don't really see a need to, to, to touch on that specifically. I more think it would work itself out through these little projects, that we kind of figure out what we want by doing these little downtown development initiatives.
Okay, okay, thank you. Alderman, Eugene Wesley?
Item number B, that's a future meeting. Before that comes to council, are we going to get that all cleaned up that we talked about, about? Before this even comes for council approval, I, I'd like to know where we stand with that developer. I mean, I...
Mr. Murmice?
Yeah, Attorney Bond actually has already been working on that, and that'll be given to you before we discuss this.
Any other items? I make a motion to adjourn, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries?
Okay, I'd like to call the Finance Committee, meeting order. Let the record show that everyone is still present. Need a motion approved in minutes January twelfth, two thousand twelve.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Number four, residential financial agreement, waste removal. I'll turn it right over to... I thought I was going to Brad, but I'll go to Jeff.
Thank you, Alderman Wesley. Well, just kind of a brief historical recap. About two years ago, we entered into a waste service franchise agreement with Allied. And this agreement has been going quite well for the past two years. We introduced toter carts, we introduced a bigger recycling program. We have had positive remarks for the most part throughout the community. I think we're a cleaner community. And going, moving forward with that, obviously, there's another opportunity for us to be more fiscally responsible, more environmentally responsible. And that is kind of a blanket franchise agreement. There are some neighboring communities that have, have started to do this. There are some neighboring communities that have been doing it for quite some time. So this is nothing new, or, or earth-shattering. This is just something that we are recommending maybe moving into. There's really two components of it. The first component would be an entire residential blanket franchise agreement. With our, with our previous contract, there were some pockets that were left out, pockets meaning multifamily, some multifamily residences were left out, some condo associations. The first up that we're recommending is bringing these into our agreement. These associations or buildings would not receive higher costs, it would be, you know, equal or lower to what they're paying today, with the addition of recycling is a big bonus. And like I said before, a program like this, instead of having three or four different companies driving their trucks through town, kind of backtracking, we've got one company doing it. There's less wear and tear on our alleys, our streets, our roads, less pollution. I mean, that's kind of the gist of the program, to start out with the residential, then possibly move forward with commercial. But this tonight is just residential. I did bring Rick Boltis here from, from Republic, and I'm sure he could speak to the program a little on how it works and what we need to do, and then answer any questions you may have. So, I was going to turn it over to Rick for a brief description.
Good evening, Chairman Wesley, Alderman Mayor. You know, one of my roles as your environmental services provider is to, you know, make you aware of changes that are going on in the industry relative to recycling, well, relative to waste removal. And so, you know, a couple of months ago, I just shared with staff what's kind of happening. Every once in a while, we'll just, you know, kind of do updates and what's happening in the area. And as Jeff mentioned, the, the franchise, commercial franchise concept is not something new. In fact, it's been around for a number of years in neighboring communities of Addison and Roselle. Just recently, though, it's become more, it's garnered attention again, primarily because of the environmental impact, and the recycling impact that it can have. As was mentioned, you know, it's, it's not unlike the same reason you've franchised your residential, your curbside residential. I mean, you don't want four or five trucks going down your residential streets, and four or five different vendors, when you could have, have one, from a safety standpoint, from a emissions standpoint. And that same concept works throughout the rest of the community as well. You can, you know, eliminate a lot of truck traffic, a lot of unnecessary emissions, and you can increase recycling substantially, because you have a consolidated program. You also have a single point of, of contact in a program like that. And as I hear you talking tonight about some redevelopment in your downtown areas and kind of a, a front door to the community, it would, especially in areas like that, provide you the ability to kind of control the, the appearances of what's happening relative to waste and recycling as well. You know, instead of a, a strip mall with, you know, seven different dumpsters behind it, you know, that are maybe or maybe not inside of an enclosure, you know, you can, you can provide direction with, you know, one larger compactor with a key card system or something like that. So the technology is there to kind of clean things, clean things up, especially in your downtown areas, and you see a lot of towns have moved towards that as well. It is not, it is somewhat of a laborious process. It does take anywhere from twelve to eighteen months to go through the necessary. There's one or two hearings, and then there's a, a waiting period, a phase-in period. But what we're talking about for the commercial, it's just for the commercial sector. So what we're talking about tonight is just the residential phase-in. That can be done fairly unobtrusively. You already have most of your residents in your franchise, and this would just expand to the ones that are currently not benefiting from, from the residential franchise.
Yeah. My first question is, what potential liabilities? Let me back up, starting, most communities, city, rental properties and commercial properties have always historically been outside the, the city, village, municipal service. So my first question is, what sparking to go to this? Is there anything other than, let's say, the green aspect of only one truck picking up everything?
There's also the economies of scale, the business, and now relative to the commercial, you know, the overall, the commercial franchise. Typically, you see anywhere from twenty to thirty percent reduction in cost because of the economies of scale. In other words, you've got one hauler going down and picking up every, you know, every container in an alley versus skipping one and going to the next one. So the economies of, it's an efficiency issue, and efficiency breeds lower costs, in addition to lower emissions.
One, well, this is probably for the city manager or finance director. As far as the billing and collecting this money, do we perceive any issues of people paying or not paying? Thank you.
Probably better answered by Rick, because they actually do the billing, so we don't have any extra headache for this.
Actually, actually what it provides, it actually provides a nice relationship with the city and the hauler on the building side. One of the things that you, as a city, will struggle with, if someone doesn't pay a bill, say for example, it's a restaurant, okay? And we, you know, shut off service temporarily, you know, you don't find out about it now until it's an issue, right? There's garbage piling up. In a franchise, in the communities that we have franchises, it's proactive. In other words, we're calling you and saying, hey, you know, Pete's Hot Dog Stand is past due, you know, you might want to send somebody from the health department over, we've got issues there. So it's, it's that interaction that goes back and forth that really helps throughout the community in, in many different ways.
Thank you.
Alderman Winger?
Okay, I'll just start with that last topic, and, but overall, I do find that there's going to be a lot of different aspects that we're going to have to work out, so I don't think it's going to be as smooth as might be suggested. Given the, the billing, right now, we build a residence on the water bill, correct? So, are you saying that, and I don't want to talk about commercial in this conversation, so are you saying that the residents that are being added on will be built directly by Allied Waste, and the others are still going to be built on the city water bill?
Yeah, I mean, the ones that, we, we currently send, obviously, one invoice to the city for the, for the curbside, single-family homes...
Right.
...under the current thing. How much you charge the residents back on their water bill, I don't know. And I don't know if it's the same amount I charged you, or if it's more or less. You might be subsidizing it, you might not. I don't know what you're doing. That's your issue with the residents.
Okay.
Under this new, under, as we would bring these other residential developments on, we would bill them directly. It would not add to your billing responsibilities.
So then, that might be an answer to, to my next question, because it was referenced, how can it be, it, it was referenced that these add-ons would be paying equal or less than what they pay now? Is that because you're negotiating with each association?
Well, it would be some of the efficiencies that we would pick up. In other words, we would, you know, if there'd be associations that we maybe currently don't have, but are located in between another association, there might be a, a multifamily building, you know, that we're going to now, that we're driving by now, okay? So a lot of the costs are already imputed, so there's efficiencies that are picked up, and some of that would result in a possible cost savings to them.
So it is negotiated directly with each association as far as the rates, given their proximity to others and that sort of thing?
Well, no, we would, we would provide a rate structure to the city, okay? So that those, just for example, just like your single-family homes all pay the same rate, okay? It would typically be based on the number of units in, in a building, and it would be a, a fixed, you know, fee that they knew that they would be charged under the city's program, okay?
So if it's a high rise of a hundred units, that would be the structure, plus a hundred units is this cost?
It would be so much per unit, right.
So a building of four, it would be this, like that kind of...
And the other reason, the reason you do that too, is why you do it by unit, okay? Because now, you don't have the incentive for the building owners sometimes, okay? Especially in, in, to provide inadequate service, okay? Because you're charging by unit. So you, they're going to get the exact equipment they need, the frequency of pickups they need, to make sure that everything is always, you know, container's not overflowing, there's plenty of capacity there, as well as recycling for that facility, that complex as well.
Do you mind if I ask a few more questions? Okay. Okay, so then, probably just lastly, that if we went this way, and those independent associations, if they decided that they weren't pleased with the service, how, how would they then remove themselves? Is it after the contract anniversary, or how does that work?
It would be under the same, same scenario that your single-family homes are now. It would be, our contract would be with the city, okay? The city would absorb, that, from a billing standpoint, just from a responsibility standpoint, they would say, hey, you know, all of our residential units are in the same bucket. We're going to take responsibility for the waste and recycling services that are provided to our residents, whether they be single-family or multifamily, okay? So under that scenario, they would be part of the same franchise agreement the single-family homes are, and they would have the same recourse, you know? I mean, obviously, you know, service is, is an important issue, and if, if there was a service issue, they would, you know, I would expect to be contacted by the city. But I wouldn't expect that to be the case.
So, Mr. Murmice, each individual association would have to then agree to it initially, right?
They wouldn't necessarily have to agree. It's, it's similar to the, I liken it to the electric aggregation program, where we're kind of lumping everybody in to get a cheaper price, so why would you not? The service is comparable, if not better. Everybody's on the same program, you pay the same or less price, similar to electric aggregation. Opting out probably isn't a possibility.
Right.
Along the lines of electric aggregation, it didn't work out for several people in my ward. They were actually going to pay more in the aggregation, just based on the structure of how their, their homes were built.
Well, exactly, but from my understanding, the, they wouldn't be a part of the program unless they were paying equal or less than what they're paying now. There wouldn't be that circumstance where they'd be paying more.
That would mean they'd be opting out, in the garbage scenario.
Correct, but there's, I don't believe there's a circumstance where they would pay more.
No, and, you know, the, the concept for the city to consider is, you know, that you now can bring the recycling services, because often you'll see in these multifamily, they, they do very little to know recycling, okay? Because it's an add-on. And under these scenarios, the recycling services will come in at typically no cost, so that there's, there's the incentive to recycle.
Come over here, Mayor Police.
I thought he had his hand up.
I do, but you go ahead first.
A couple things. Have we contacted the homeowners associations? Because I don't want them getting a letter, and then we're going to have three hundred people in here from Dominion, from Spruce and Hiawatha over on eighty-three. How's that going to work? Go ahead.
Yeah, I mean, coming from staff, and I mean, I don't think we should be contacting homeowners associations before we see, conceptually, if you guys even want to do this. I mean, that would be backwards.
Okay, all right, follow-up?
Sure.
So, we talk about fewer trucks going through, be, you know, because you're already in town. So, are you telling me that the trucks that pick up the homes are also going to pick up those four-yard containers out of those, it's going to be different trucks, right? You're still sending... It's gonna be different trucks, right? You're still sending another truck in.
It depends what kind of service. I think there's some associations that actually still service, are serviced curbside, like your single-family homes. Um, and those will probably be serviced with trucks similar to what you see in-
No, I'm talking about, a lot of the ones that aren't serviced, if I'm understanding correctly, are over by eighty-three and Spruce and Hiawatha. What do we got? Brookwood, Dominion, I mean, we've got six, seven?
To your, to your question, if they're containerized now, you know, with, with a dumpster, okay?
Right.
Um, that would be a, a different style truck than is picking up curbside. The, the multi-family or the associations that are not part of your current residential contract actually fall into both buckets. There are some that are still, are curbside, like your residential is now, and those would be serviced by the similar trucks. And there are some that are containerized with the dumpster, and those would be serviced by the commercial truck that's going by.
And I understand, like, now for single-family homes, everybody pays the same thing. Uh, let's say, um, Dominion's paying a hundred dollars for their container and Brookwood's paying a hundred and twenty. So one's gonna pay a hundred, the other one's gonna pay a hundred and twenty, if it's the same amount of units?
I mean, you, the pricing would, the whole idea is to have uniform pricing based on the same, same size building.
Right, you're gonna break it down by units, I take it, because these are all condo associations.
That makes the most sense, yeah.
So are all these units gonna pay the same price all the way across the city? Doesn't sound like it.
Um, I would, the, compared to what your single-family homes, I mean, there'll, there'll be buckets. In other words, a, like, for example, say, a, a six to twelve unit building, or a six to fifteen, you know, and we'll, and we'll, we'll do the research and the due diligence to see where your building's kind of the natural break between the building sizes, okay? So let's say you've got a six to thirty unit building, they'll probably be in one price point, okay? That keeps them all at the same price point per unit. Then you're gonna have one, you might have one that is in over in a hundred, hundred unit plus category.
Right.
Okay, they'll be in a, in a lower price point because of, of the density, it's about density.
Well, I know, I know for sure that, you know, in any one of those buildings, I have five people in my home, and the garbage that we generate is gonna be far greater than somebody who's single or newlyweds or senior couple.
I, I will guarantee that the multi-family buildings will pay a lower per-unit cost than a single-family home.
Right, well-
Those reasons you just mentioned, and they typically don't have yard wastes typically in a, in with a-
Right, because they-
-landscapes, a service or something like that.
Okay.
I wanna, I wanna jump in here, not, of course, mother. Jeff, help me out here. I wanna take Elizabeth Park for an example. Their garbage rate is a lot lower than what the city of Wooddale pays. So, tell me how, you were talking about up and out, and are they gonna be? There's no way that the company could lower their prices for what they're paying. I mean, there, there's a big difference between what we paying and what they're paying. I don't know if their association's picking it up the difference or what, but the resident of the building is paying a lot less. Pico?
I mean, I, but, obviously, the intent here is not to raise anybody's garbage cost. The intent is to lower or keep the same and uni, um, uni, you know, have a uniform service picking it up. So if we're gonna raise residents' rates or raise commercial rates, I mean, that would not be the intent of the program. And, I mean, I wouldn't recommend that if that were the case. If it doesn't work, it doesn't work.
Okay, so I'm, I'm looking at it, okay? Now, I'm gonna use BFI, not, I'll use Republic. Um, Republic is charging, charging Elizabeth Park, say, twenty dollars, and Mr. Roy Wesley's paying thirty for a resident, for a residential home. I think we're gonna run into problems there. So-
That's actually what you would hope would happen. Because they're providing, they're providing, in other words, a single-family home is, is the most, on a per-unit basis, is the most expensive level of service to provide, right? Because at a single-family home, you typically have more people in a single-family home. You have three services, trash, recycling, and yard waste. Um, at a multi-family, um, complex, um, the demographics typically are such that sometimes there's, it's, it's, it's a more of a retirement community. Um, the, the density is, well, the density of the units is greater, the number of people in the units is less. They typically have a landscape service providing their, for their landscape needs. So you would hope that that grouping of, of, of individuals would pay less per unit than a, than a single-family home. And, you know, as we, as we talk about this, as the direction you go, we'll put the package together for staff to review, okay? Um, you know, the majority of these properties, we probably already provide service for anyway. Um, so I've got the data, and, um, they'll be able to see that what we're talking about here in terms of at similar costs or lower costs with the added benefit of now providing recycling services to these, um, these residents. Same services that your single-family residents enjoy can be done, and they'll be able to review that prior to any, any agreement being entered into.
Okay. I think it was Alderman Cooks.
Oh.
Okay. Uh, Alderman Lazar, did you have a?
Oh, who's answering, thank you.
Um, Alderman Wesley.
Let me back up here. The, is this a separate city contract with you, or will this be tacked on to our contract that we have now?
This would just be an expansion of the, of the contract you have now. Just this residential piece that we're talking about.
Okay, and do you have any idea what the cost will be for that?
To, to the city?
Right.
Nothing?
My, my concern here is Georgetown Square, I don't know if you picked that up? That's a townhouse development.
Yeah, I'm familiar with the, with the development.
Okay, we have, I think that's gonna be a major problem up there, to try and figure that out. They have association.
Mm-hmm.
Okay? And, and then what? I feel that this, if, if we, everyone's not on board, I don't see this program working, okay? And I can't sit up here and, and if we can't be on the same page with all the, I, I can't support them even tapping into expanding the service with this. Because there's, there's too many big issues there, recycling. So are you gonna provide a recycling can for every, a big can, or how are you doing that?
That, that's exactly the point. You'll have a point of contact. We will meet with each one of these associations individually to tailor a program to meet their recycling needs. Right now, my guess is a lot of them aren't recycling because it's just a hassle, and they've gotta- and they've gotta start up, and it's probably an additional cost to recycle.
Let's go Georgetown then. Last year, they spent thousands and thousands of dollars to brick all their garbage company cages in. Now you bring a recycling can out, if they choose, now who's going to pay for that? We also got a code on our, our, our books that they're supposed to be closed in garbage cage. So now we bring out a more, another big, whatever you decide to provide them. And now who's going to pay for expansion of their garbage
I wouldn't, I, I, I wouldn't expect their, um, material containment area to expand at all. Because all you've done is move stuff. When you go to recycle, you haven't increased the volume of material. You've taken material out of the trash container and put it into the recycling container. So what you do, you get creative with the size of the containers. And if they've got a container that's, you know, as big as this for trash now, then you get one that's half the size for trash, or three-quarters of the size for trash, and then a quarter of the size for recycling. You work within, I mean, if they spent a lot of money in beautifying it, making some nice enclosures for their material, then absolutely we'll work with that. But their trash container can go down in size when you provide recycling.
And are you going, say, are you going to provide the trash containers for these at a higher cost? Or will they be able to use their own?
Well, my guess is that, I'm, I'm planning to provide the containers. My guess is the containers are provided by their current vendor, that's usually the way it is. It would surprise me if they own their own. So I would replace those with ones that were slightly smaller, and then also provide a recycling container as well.
I, I, I'm just concerned is that there's a lot of these associations that spent a lot of money caging in their garbage cans now, and, you know, with brickwork and now I, he's telling me it's gonna be a smaller container, it could be, but it's gonna be hard to fit two containers in because of the big containers that come in, you get the claws that come out, and you lift it up and you dump it. I just don't see how two containers are gonna fit in there. I mean, I don't care how small it is. It's gonna be pretty hard.
Well, that's, and that's, that's my job to figure that out. I can tell you, we just, um, implemented a program like this, the Village of Schaumburg, um, January first of two thousand and eleven, um, expanded their residential contract to include all of their multi-family dwellings for the same reason. They just felt we, they wanted more control of recycling, they wanted people the opportunity to recycle. Um, so we met with, and that was thirty-five hundred units all total. And we met with each individual association on a one-to-one basis and worked through, um, each one of their challenges. And they didn't, unlike you just, you just described, some were enclosures, some were, you know, frequencies of pickups, days of, uh, days of the week. Um, what typically happens, though, on the recycling side, with typically the carts that you have currently now, the, the single-family homes, that's typically what we use for the recycling in some of these larger communities. So in other words, the container, it's a little smaller, it's still the kind like you referred to where they stay at. But then on the sides, you can put some of these ninety-five gallon carts, and those are easily wheeled around and moved around as need be inside of that enclosure.